Like the college meeting in Zion City Council order, clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Detteen?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Item number three is agenda changes. Does anyone, do the commissioners have any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
No motion.
A motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Detteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number four is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments?
Kathy Champagne of Zion, first of all, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work on home rule. I'm sorry it failed, but I appreciate all the efforts you put into it. Second, animal control. Thank you. I think that's a great idea. Are the current policies in place?
They've been adopted, but, I mean drafted, but the Animal Control Commission is going to be reviewing them this Thursday.
Okay. Would you update the webpage when they do? And could you put links in obvious places, because when you lose your dog or your cat, you kind of panic and you don't always know to drill down. So, anything that would make the link obvious to where to go for help would be great. And, I've got a question. The fires in California got me thinking. Do we have a policy if the swamp catches fire and gets near the nuclear caskets?
I don't know, I'm assuming that our fire department will respond and call in whatever assistance we need, but I guess I would defer to-
We don't have any policies in place about touching, protecting the casks. I mean, we have policies in place just for fighting brush fires-
Right.
-wildland, if you want to call that, but there's nothing in place that says specifically cut off to that.
Might be worth considering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five is discussion authorization and approval. Item 5A is consider approval of plan to address May 1, 2019 to April 30, 2020 budget deficit. And before we get into details, I guess I would like to make some opening remarks. The budget deficit that we're looking at is in the neighborhood of $1,662,174. That's for the budget coming up next year. It's not the budget year that we're in right now. Right now, we're covered and the, we expect to have a beginning fund balance at the end of this year of $400,000. And the $400,000 will be used, when I give you the number of $1,662,174, the $400,000 carryover from this year to next year is already included in that. So, if we didn't have the $400,000 carryover, that budget deficit would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million. We will balance the budget. It's going to be difficult for everybody. We are going to approach this from the idea that we will do what has the least amount of impact on the citizens of Zion. We're not, I think often when you see communities that are trying to reduce their deficit and to scare the community, they will go after the things that are most near and dear to the citizens' hearts. We're not doing that. We're going to try and do what we can to have the least impact on the citizens. I am going to ask the commissioners, I have not talked with them about this yet, each commissioner is responsible for a certain area and certain responsibilities in the city. I'm asking them to take those hats off while we're here today and to put on the hat that we are all operating in from the best interest of the city and the citizens of Zion. That I'm not going to defend a public policy and I would hope that we're not just here to defend the area that we're responsible for. We have to look at what's best for the overall good of the city. I want to be sure that everybody understands that these are, this is a city council decision. And it's the five of us that are making these decisions and there's going to be a new council. I won't be here when these are in effect, but the city, every city council member has to, when some services are cut and citizens are calling to complain, we or you are going to have to remember that it's a council decision and we have to explain that. We can't, if we decide that we're going to cut a certain service, someone calls up to complain that they're not getting that service, we can't and you can't go back to your department heads and say, "You got to provide that." If we're cutting services and we're sitting here tonight or today, this afternoon, determining that we're going to cut services, we have to live with that decision and we have to explain that decision. There will be, I think that when there are some services cut, that many of these recommendations have come from department heads and if, as city council members, if we hear complaints about it, we can't go back and say, "You were the department head that recommended this. You know, you need," and it's not working out and people are angry, "You're held responsible for this." And I just want to say, no, these are city council decisions and we have to man up when people complain or voice their displeasure with these cuts. In the past, we have, I think we need to establish even, I guess before we get into this, if we need, if we intend to change our priorities, we have mentioned in the past that the, and worked in the past, that our priorities in the community are crime and housing. And we've done some things and the building department has been responsible for the rental inspections and trying to upgrade the housing in the community. And as far as crime, obviously the police department is involved in that, but there's also the building department, because we've had the nuisance abatement ordinance and we've tried to do some things with that. If you have, if you want the priorities to change and if you want it to be on our streets or you want it to be on infrastructure, whatever you want, we have to determine that. And I don't think we're going to be able to determine that today, but when we look at these, at what I am suggesting and presenting to the council for how we can address the deficit, if you decide that our priorities need to change, we need to do that in the next couple of weeks. So, you have a outline of some information in front of you and I'm not going to go into detail. This afternoon's discussion is going to be between department heads and the city council. We will not, at this point, be taking suggestions from the floor. We will not be getting into question and answer periods from the floor. I think that will come at another time. I'm going to present some general approaches here and I think you'll understand when I start talking about this stuff, I don't want to do some things right now in public. It's issues that we will have to determine. If this is the way we want to go, then we'll go that way. The first area that you have in front of you is retirement slash position eliminations. And what we are suggesting is that we would like to, we have a number of people who are in high-level positions that are making a significant amount of money more than new employees. And I will call the meeting back to order and I apologize for that, although unfortunately we have, didn't have to go far to have the fire department here and give you can edit all that out, so. That's a good part. Anyway, the first section that we wanted to talk about is that we will be talking to the higher-end paid people that work for the city, that are eligible for retirement, and encourage them to retire and try and provide some incentives if we can to have those people be retired. Some of those positions will be eliminated and some of them will be filled. And depending on which positions are which, and we're not going into detail about which positions we're talking about right now, we'll determine how much is actually cut from the, and the impact that that has on the deficit. We will be sending layoff letters to all the unions. And at the same time that we are sending the layoff letters, we will be approaching the unions for, to discuss the preference for each union on 5% furloughs of all employees. And that would mean that every other Friday you would not be working and that would entail a 5%-
Mayor, can I just interject something?
Sure.
Because this is the first time we've seen this proposal.
Yes.
So, I think what we should, what we should say is that this is the proposal you are presenting to-
That's correct. Right. I'm sorry. This is, this is what I'm presenting to the council. This is not the council's proposal to you. This is what I'm presenting to the council and we would proceed if the council agrees with this. 5% furloughs for all employees. That's an alternative to the layoff letters. Another alternative would be that we would increase insurance compensations based on proportionate share of total salaries. And that insurance, health insurance would equal $364,290. And the way that that would be structured is that each individual would pay a certain percentage of their salary for their insurance premium. And it's set up, the way it's, it was set up so that the, everyone is affected equally based on their pay. And what that would mean is that the, David Nabel is the highest-paid individual with the city as a city administrator and he would pay an additional $5,800 a year for his health insurance, or, yes, for his health insurance. The lowest-paid person in the city would pay an additional $1,800. And everybody else in between would pay that proportionate share. It would be a percentage of your salary, so the higher your salary goes, the higher your contribution to the, your health insurance. And the, I believe the percentage was, I can't remember what it was, David. What is it? Was it 4%?
I think it's about, it's about 4% of our, it's about 4% of our total insurance costs.
4% of the total insurance cost and that's what, how it would be covered.
I'm sorry, 4% of total wages.
4% of total wages, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, we would, let me, I just wanted to clarify. If, if we're going to be sending layoff letters or your proposal to send layoff letters to all the unions, is that because we just, we just need that timeframe, sending off letters of possible layoffs? If some of these other items that you proposed here happen, will we need to do those layoffs or is this, we need to do all of these that you're suggesting plus the layoffs?
No. What we, we need to have $364,290 is what we're asking from the employees. And if, if the unions, and each union will have its own choice. If the, if 150 would say, "We don't want, we don't, we don't want a furlough and we don't want to contribute more to our health insurance," then their portion of the $364,000 would come through layoffs.
Okay. So, it's kind of either/or?
It's either/or, yes. We need to, we need to get $364,290. You can take it in layoffs and you all know, you all know how-
Gosh, I'm having a tough time up here.
Yeah. It could either be layoffs, it could be furloughs, or it could be insurance, increased your payment for your insurance premium.
Commissioner McDowell, just to kind of respond to your question, per union contracts, the only way we can really open, reopen negotiations on contracts is actually through a layoff letter. That's the trigger to then say, they can request that we sit down and renegotiate and open that up to talk about these other items, or if they say, "Okay, that's what it is." But that's, contractually and legally, that's our only way to basically request a reopening of the contract is that layoff letter is triggering and then you have 30 days, I think it is, before you can even take any action anyway.
Okay.
But that's to open up the discussions for what sort of solution we can give with each of the groups.
Okay. And your point was well taken also and especially important when we, when we look at some of the other things in here. These are proposals. Some of these may be adopted, some of them may not be adopted. The, the ones that we've talked about so far, the, the encouragement for retirement on the higher-salary people and what we need from all people on, on either the layoffs, furloughs, or health insurance increases, those are, we really need those. And when we go down the list here, so, commissioners have any other questions on that? I think you've asked the ones that I hope people understand what we're talking about. There are choices that each union will have on, on how we can get to the $364,000. If you go down to the next one and I'm going to, I'm going to read through these and we can come back and discuss them. We would like to perhaps negotiate with the fire union to negotiate the six minimum manning in the fire department, close station two. We, in, our estimate is that if we negotiated to six minimum in the fire department, it would be $100,000 a year. Closing station two would save us $20,000 a year. We have, we would not be replacing a CSO that we, has departed from the city and that would save $75,000 next year. There are, I believe it's one, two, two positions that would not be filled. One in the police department, are they both in the police department? Are they-
Yes.
Both in the police department? And that would be $91,000 for each of those positions for $182,000. We would reduce overtime for plowing alleys. We would just have to inform the residents that if we're only, if there's a snowstorm and we would get the main streets and the arterial streets. And then, once they're completed, we would not be keeping people on for overtime. We would ask that they come back at 4:30 in the morning and reduce the overtime cost by, that would be $35,000. We're eliminating a full-time position in the finance department and we would go with two part-time people. The commissioners and mayor would provide a 10% donation back to the city. The salaries are set by ordinance for next year. We already did that, I guess, a month ago, but we're asking the mayor and commissioners to donate 10% back. We would balance bill ambulance calls by $40,000, 10% increase in permits and license charges for $69,500, 10% increase in fines and tickets for $55,000, eliminate nostalgia days and jubilee days, cost of $40,000, remove bulbs from lights throughout the city, approximately half of them, for savings of $65,000. Eliminate chipping program. We wouldn't save any money with it, but it would clear up man-hours in the public works for other duties. We would eliminate mosquito spraying for $4,000 and we would eliminate the city attorney coming to city council meetings for half of them, for half the meetings and with the savings of $7,200. We put all those together with your revenue, additional revenue and expense cuts, it comes to $2,69,777 and we would have an ending surplus of $477,303. And that is approximately one week of, David, what's the, what's, there'd be one week worth of expenses if we-
Payroll bills are about, average about $400,000 a week.
So, that's what the surplus would be at the end of the year. If we, if all of these things were instituted, that's where we would sit. I, I understand that none of this is good news for people, all of you that work for the city. You do, you've done an excellent job. I have no complaints on, on what kind of job you're putting out, but we're at the point where we have patched this budget together for the past five years that I've been involved with the council and we, we can't patch anything anymore. We're hoping, there are a couple of things, I guess, there's another item on the agenda and I'm going to, one of the things that we will do is be discussing whether we can, are willing to put the, a referendum for an increase in the sales tax only in April. And if that would be approved, there might be, there's some light at the end of the tunnel. There are a couple of other things that are out there that we've been, the last, like I said, the last four or five years, where we've been hoping that these things come through. We've still got a possibility of a medical marijuana cannabis cultivation center that could be located in the city. That's still in the courts and if the individuals who are, want to put the facility in Zion, if they get the permit, they are still committed to coming here. And that could have an impact on, a significant impact on the city's budget considering what talk is coming out of Springfield on legalization of marijuana. Because we will get a percent of their gross sales, so that might be there. And then there's suspend fuel rods, but as I said, we've been proceeding these past few years, hoping that one of these things comes through and we don't have to make drastic cuts to the budget, but they haven't come through and we can't rely on, I think especially from the, I don't want to say tenor of the, the vote on us being home rule. I guess I'll just say the, the final result was rather overwhelming that people did not want us to be home rule and they were afraid of their taxes going up. But I, I would, I would propose that we put the sales tax back on as a referendum as, that's the only tax that we could possibly raise. And, but at this point, we don't know if that's going to happen, so we can't count on that as a revenue source. So, I open it up for the commissioners and any questions that you might have.
Mayor, when you say eliminate nostalgia days, jubilee days, that would just be the city's contribution to, to those events?
The city would continue to contribute to, from the hotel motel tax, but this is, this is police overtime for both of the events-
Overtime and staff time.
That we, we pick up and staff time for the event.
So, if, if the chamber, for example, wants to continue to sponsor nostalgia days and jubilee days, they can. Then just the funding, if they, if they want any police or ESTA presence, then they would have to put that into their budget to pay the city for those services.
And I just think that would be police. I don't think that includes ESTA, because I think ESTA's relatively cheap.
They would be charged at the special event rate that we approved, was it last-
They would, they would still receive the contribution of the hotel motel tax, though, correct?
Right. What, what would happen is it would basically, if there was a private organization or the chamber wanted to take these over, they could apply for the hotel motel tax grant out of that fund, just like any other special event that comes to the city. But, and I believe, and there may be people here that remember it more than I do, I believe that when the stables was private, they actually contributed or paid for some of the police overtime and everything. So, we'd go back to that model rather than having a city-run and funded option.
But they still would receive hotel motel tax, because we have a contract with the chamber right now.
Right.
And how much is that? Is it $34,000?
I think, I think it's more around $40,000 for both events per year, but 10 comes out of the general fund. The rest comes out of hotel motel tax, 15 for each event.
Okay.
Not counting the staff time and police overtime and things of that nature.
When, talking about the feat of the home rule and the sales tax referendum, just talking to people, there seemed to be a big disconnect or misperception that home rule, we would increase property taxes. I think it might be good to explain what the sales tax would do and how that differs from a property tax.
Well, I think we got clobbered. The Realtor Associations came out with a number of flyers that went to the homes and, I don't want to say threatened people or guaranteed people that if they voted for home rule that we would, their tax, their property taxes would go up. And there were 17 other taxes that they listed that we could have, have started collecting from people. We had no intention of doing that. Our only intent was to, there were three things that we were trying to do. We were trying to get home rules so that we had more flexibility and more power on building and code violations and things like that. And the other was in the ability to increase, oh, it's, crime-free housing issues. And we wanted to, again, we wanted to enhance our building department and our police department and what we could do with those. And then the other one that we wanted to do is raise the sales tax. But I think you're right. People came up, understanding that we were, were thinking that we were going to be raising their property taxes when there was no intention of doing that whatsoever. If we were home rule, we could have done that without going to referendum. So, I think there has to be a better explanation of what the tax is. And I believe it would raise, one, or, we collect, if you pay sales tax in Zion right now, you pay 7% on whatever you buy. That 7% goes to the state and the state returns 1% to us and is $2.4 million a year.
Correct.
So, if we raise the sales tax an additional 1%, the additional 1% could not be charged to any food that you would buy in a grocery store, any pharmacy products, or any large purchases like cars or boats or, or that type of thing. That, the additional 1% would not apply to that. And I think our estimate was that we would bring in $1.7 million in additional revenue with additional sales tax. Correct?
Correct. Depending on whether it's 1% to 1.5%.
Right.
It, it does kind of prepared foods, not groceries, but like if you go and buy rotisserie chicken at the grocery store or something like that.
Or a wrap sale.
Meals prepared for immediate consumption. But yes.
And that, that tax, as I understood it, wouldn't be solely on the backs of Zion residents. I think that was the other misunderstanding that needs to be clarified.
Right. The intent, the intent was that there's other individuals, other than Zion residents, that shop here in Zion. A large portion does come from Zion, but went to Carver Wadsworth, you know, Beach Park, come and shop here, anyone passing through, getting gas, things of that nature. So, we were trying to find a way to generate the revenue needed without it bearing solely on Zion residents. Unfortunately, because it failed, it ironically does all fall on the backs of Zion residents, whether it's in other revenues or service cuts to bear that. So, we were trying to, like I said, defer, diversify those revenue streams so that we didn't have to solely rely on property taxes or, and we weren't going just to Zion residents and businesses for that revenue.
Now, if I'm correct, I got another question I have is, the property tax in the surrounding areas, I think they're higher than ours, if I'm correct. Or could you clarify that? The sales tax?
Yes. Wadsworth is 8%. I think Waukegan's 8.5%. Gurnee is 8%. Wisconsin's always been lower to the north. I think they're 5.5, except on food. So, you know, there was a lot of discussion about, well, if I, if the percent went up to 8% in Zion, I would just go to Gurnee or to Waukegan and it's like, well, you'd be paying that same percent, if not higher there, and not having it be local. So, there was some misconceptions on that as well.
You mentioned Wisconsin and I know their property taxes are lower, but I think their overall tax commitment is probably- but, um, I, I think their overall tax commitment is probably the same as ours, with, if you include retirement income, they tax retirement in for, okay, just, just curious.
Yeah, the last time I looked, uh, if you compare all taxes in Illinois and Wisconsin, what's, and if you go to Wisconsin, you actually pay more taxes if you live there than you do in Illinois, based on a hundred thousand dollar salary. Um, and of course, it depends on the value of your house. You pay a lot more in property taxes here, but you pay a lot more in income tax up there than you do in Illinois. And then if you're, happen to be retired, uh, it's significant difference. So, um, are there any other comments or discussion from the commissioners?
And just looking over this, it looks like, um, there needs to be discussion, um, in the departments to, to get agreement on some of these issues. So, decisions necessary can't be made, um, about this proposal until we talk with, uh, each of the department heads and the, the unions associate.
I guess, right, I, I get, however, I guess what I'm looking for is, if we can do this, do you want to do this? Um, I, we've been, we've been talking about, uh, our budgets, in this budget, on and on and on and on, and, uh, we have not come to a final decision on, on how, on what we're going to do. And, and, uh, I think, uh, yeah, we might, this might be it, if they can do it, if it's possible to do it. I'm, I'm looking for, and then I think from, what we would have to do is from, from this meeting on, uh, the department heads would have to be approached, and if we're going to encourage people to retire, um, we have to ask them, are they ready to retire? Are they willing to do this? If they say no, um, and we can't do it, uh, then, uh, again, that comes back to that, do you want to, um, pay for nostalgia days, the forty thousand dollars? So we want to cover police, that would go back into the three, three sixty-four.
But it looks, a, a bulk of this needs to be discussed by, with the department heads and with the, uh, with the unions.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we-
So we can't, we can't unilaterally make this kind of decision. It has to be, we need to know what the response is from, from our departments.
Right, but I think what, what I'm looking for is, I think we need to unilaterally make the decision that we're going to try and do this.
Oh, right.
And then if we can't, then we're, I mean, there are going to be more meetings. But I think this is what we're looking at, and, um, that we want to proceed along these lines. And, 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 but by talking to the department heads to let us know, okay, yeah, you can do this, and no, you can't do this. And the reason that we're doing it this way is because, I guess, we didn't want... It's, it's a sensitive issue, I think that's what freaked me out before. I understand, and we all understand that, that we're dealing with people's lives here. And, uh, to talk about something in public that we're not committed to really doing is not fair to, to you and to anybody that's an employee of the city. Um, and so, I'm, I'm presenting this, and then we would be then saying, okay, these are the positions that we're looking at quietly, I don't want to talk about it in public yet, but it would be, uh, the commissioner and the, and the department heads and myself and, um, talking about whether this is a possibility or not. And, and, and that's why we're approaching it from this point.
Is the balance bill on ambulance calls, is that the, uh, reducing proposal we voted down?
Yes, that would be, uh, go ahead.
I have, I have a correction on that, I've, the number is actually around between seventy-six and eighty-six thousand, not forty thousand.
Okay.
Oh. Um, I mean, mo- most of the questions that I, I have left, I think, are within the departments, um, not in, in this session. I, I mean, I, this is the first time I've seen this.
Yep.
Um, and, and just looking at it, I, I think it is worth bringing this to the department heads and to the unions for, uh, discussion.
Okay, can we go down then, and, uh, let's go down past, uh, closed station two? And address those? Can we not fill, I guess I, alright, never mind.
How do you, how can you get twenty thousand savings by closing station two? Because we're, you know, we're not talking about reducing a number of firefighters, we're talking about just maintenance on the building.
There's monthly copier, there's some maintenance, there's, um, utilities, things of that nature. We put, we put about twenty thousand a year into that facility for operations and just costs of running it.
Yeah. I mean, we are in the middle of, of working on a consolidation plan with Beach Park Fire Protection District, um, so I, I think that needs, closing station two needs to be discussed wider than just, um, the city, because we're in the middle of consolidation talks.
That, that's correct, and I would, I would drop down to, um, the last item there, this is ninety-one thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars, where it talks about not replacing, uh, uh, police officer in the police department. And I think all the, all the ones in yellow above that also apply to talking to the department heads on that. But, uh, I mean, go, I, I think we can, it, it might be reasonable to say, are, are we willing to reduce overtime by not, by not plowing the alleys? If, if that's one of the things we want to do, let's say it tonight, today. If not, let's not say it, let's say we're not going to do that. And I guess I'm-
I've had this discussion with Director Roberts a couple of times, and, um, you know, it, it is going to be inconvenient for some, for residents. I, I live on an alley, um, but, um, this would be, uh, it may depend on the seasons, it may depend on the weather, how much this will, this will impact residents.
Right.
So, um, I think that's a, it's a low-impact way to save some money by saving some of that overtime, because that, it can become substantial if we get a big weather event, so...
Alright, then-
It'll be painful, but I think it's necessary.
So do we have a consensus that that would be a yes?
I, I don't, I don't know if I can give an answer to that, because there's so many variables here. So, um, you know, if, if we don't, um, get agreement on, you know, one of these, um, you know, layoffs, furlough days, insurance, well, then we might have to resort to not plowing the alleys. But if, if we can get agreement on some of these other areas, then-
We're still going to have to make it, we still will not be able to plow alleys.
Right.
The bottom line, that, that one week of, of money that we have at the end of the year is saying that we're not going to plow alleys, and we're going to get all the other things above that we, we had hoped for.
How come there's no amount for the chipping program?
Because we would, the, there's no reduction in staff.
What, what, what would happen is, um, those hours, cause it's five weeks in the spring and five weeks in the fall, all those man-hours, instead, we would divert those efforts to patching potholes, street repair and maintenance. Cause right now, this is a, this is, the chipping program is essentially an additional service we're providing to the residents, but we're not, because we also have landscape waste pickup through Advance, so residents would still be able to, if they, they bungle, um, tree trimmings and branches correctly, Advance would still pick those up.
Sure, yeah.
So, the chipping program is, is an additional service, but right now, we need to re, we need to look at reprioritizing, and I think a lot of people will agree that patching potholes in streets and alleys would be a higher priority.
I would, I would, I would guess also.
So eliminating the, the plowing of the alleys is-
No, it wouldn't be eliminated.
It's just overtime.
Right, well, that's what it says here.
So it incurs overtime.
Right, that's what we should be saying. So it, so it doesn't incur overtime, an additional cost to the city, it's done, um, as staff is available.
During regular business hours, yes.
So is there a consensus that yes on that?
For me?
There is for me, everybody, correct? Then, uh, there's, uh, the next one is clerical in the finance department, eliminate the full-time position and hire part-time? Is there consensus on that?
I, I don't know the ramifications of that, David, can you explain it?
Yeah, basically, we'd be, a- as the mayor said, we'd be taking a full-time position at the counter and doing two part-time twenty-hour positions. Um, you wouldn't have then your, um, your insurance, and you'd actually be able to slightly lower hourly rate, so, um, we'd still be able to, be ready to provide the same level of service at the front, um, which is one less full-time position. Obviously, it becomes more difficult when you go to full, uh, part-time positions to, you have more turnover, long-term, um, training, things like that, but-
Has this idea been discussed in your department?
We, we just started talking about it last week, as we were putting these things together, so...
Is there any agreement, um, on, uh, part of the employees affected?
We haven't gone back to specifically address a lot of these things. Um, you know, it's just, it's, it's one of the things that, until council said, this is the direction we're going to go on these things, I didn't want to, you know, we didn't want to go to unions and departments and, um, speak out of turn, because once you say it, it becomes gospel.
And, oh, wait, excuse, excuse me, I'm not, I want to be sure that we're, we're talking about the same thing. There's a full-time opening right now.
Oh, I see.
That would be filled with two part-time rather than a full-time. We just had somebody, uh, terminate from the-
Correct.
-city last Friday.
Okay.
Rather than filling that with a full-time position, we would fill it with two part-time.
Is that a consensus on that? Uh, the commissioner, mayor donation, ten percent, everybody willing to throw ten percent of your, what we get paid, that's nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I guess it's, the, the next one is a hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, one hundred and eight dollars. Are we committed to, uh, uh, property tax levy of, uh, increase two point one percent and go to our maximum?
Is that the estimated, uh, CPI?
Yes, that's the CPI rate for this year.
Uh, will that affect the, um, tax rate?
Oh, yeah, yeah. But it's also dependent on how values, you know, if property values go up and, um, if property values go up by ten percent and levies go up by two percent, the rate will go down by eight percent, it's all formulaic, so, um, but any time you ask for more taxes, any, any tax, anybody asks for more in their levy, it's going to result in more property taxes.
Larry's here, can you, can you help us on the next-
This is a reassessment years, which means that I will be revaluing all the properties in the township, and I would think that overall, our assess valuation will probably go up about eight percent. Um, there's a lot of houses that are really, really low right now, and after I revalue them, they're going to be back up where they should be. Um, usually, you get about eight percent out of plot, and you lose two percent at the mortgage review, so... I wish we could get some big buildings or something new, but I don't see anything on horizon right now.
I, I'm not willing to commit on that.
I'm going to put that down as a maybe. Uh, balance bill ambulance for seventy-six to eighty thousand dollars. Is there a consensus on that?
Can you talk- We, we brought this up, uh, at a prior city council meeting and decided against it.
But circumstances have changed, so, so I think we should definitely consider it.
If a resident, um, is unable to, to pay the, the bill, what will we do?
You pursue collecting at that point.
It'd be no different than a non-resident billing.
Right. Uh, is it likely that residents that have, uh, health insurance, that would be covered by health insurance?
I mean, it's no different than non-resident, so they have, it's obviously go Medicare, Medicaid insurance. So if they're on Medicare, Medicaid, that's going to pay first, balance goes to insurance, if they don't have Medicare, Medicaid, then it goes strictly to insurance. And whatever's not paid by annual three, then it goes as a bill to the customer.
And if they don't have insurance, somebody doesn't have health insurance, they get the full bill?
Yeah, typically, what happens even currently now, so if somebody doesn't pay a bill, it'll end up coming to me, and then, if they've got to go through an attorney and say, I cannot afford this, are you willing to write it off? Then that's a decision we have to make, yes, we want to write it off, no, we don't. You know, we've, we've done that in the past for people who are minimum incomes, they owe three hundred dollars left on their bill, we don't take them to court for three hundred dollars, cause it's going to cost me more to fight for three hundred dollars, I'm going to collect three hundred dollars, so we just write that out. We don't want to get in the practice of just writing off, I'm just going to write letter saying I can't afford it and get it written out. And we're bringing it to the public because we need revenue. You know, and as Commissioner said earlier, they chose not to go the home rule way. That might have helped, now, we're forced to find revenue in a different direction, so, it's a customer-based fee. Everybody's not going to get charged, but if you use the ambulance and you don't have insurance, then you will be that as a bill.
So I'm going to owe you eighteen hundred dollars here.
You have insurance, Medicare, Medicaid insurance.
So, uh, Captain Lewis, does this address the issue we talked about during city council meetings of, uh, people calling for service and not really needing it?
Um, that's yet to be seen, I mean, we've been running this since, I believe, August twenty-first. We just sent out our first bill today, and how much was it?
Thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty from just one resident. Now, I can tell you, I think guys are very familiar, we're there in a bag, that resident has told us every time we take her, I'm not paying that bill. Charge me all you want, I'm not going to pay it. I don't know what we do at that point, you know, does it go to adjudication court? How, how do you get that back? But yes, we've implemented that, we'll start to see revenue on that. How we collect, again, we'll have to see.
Well, when this came before our council last time, I voted no, um, I'd be a maybe this time.
Yeah, I'm a maybe. Let me check, is it maybe, ten percent increase in permits and license charges?
And this is across all, all permits, does this include city stickers?
Yes.
For vehicles?
Okay.
I'd be in favor.
I am in favor. Consensus is yes?
I'm, I'm going to be a maybe on it.
Okay, alright. Well, I mean, I need to, maybe?
No.
We got two yeses and two maybes, and Billy?
I said yes.
Okay. Yes. Increase in fines and tickets, fifty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
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 Yep.
Well, I'd say yes. Eliminate nostalgia days and jubilee days subsidy?
Yes.
Yes.
Wow. That's one, that's one we're going to hear about, though, I'll tell you that much.
But Mayor, that's not eliminating those festivals.
No.
It's just privatizing them, and we're not going to be paying, the city isn't going to be paying overtime for staffing those events.
Right. Uh, removing bulbs from various locations on lighting?
It's not going to be popular, but I'll say yes.
Yes.
Yes. I, I'd like to know the locations, but that's, you know-
But it's about every other light?
Okay.
Right. I think, uh, Ray, we're looking at, like, main intersections with still-
All intersections of, we would plan on leaving those lights. Mid-blocks would stay on possibly.
What about from alleys?
The, the other lights, if you have four lights in an alley, you take three out and the one would stay on.
Okay.
Wow.
Currently, currently, we're, we're running around two hundred thousand a year, just in energy costs.
Eliminate chipping program?
Since we-
What about the health bill salary?
I, I don't want to, that's, that's kind of like the other ones, I'm not ready to get into individual.
Yeah, since we, since we're proposing, I'm, I'll be a yes on that. I think it's a better use of our time to, to patching potholes.
I agree also. Eliminate mosquito spraying?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, that's another one that's not going to be popular, especially next July.
I know.
Supposed to be a dry winter, according to the Weather Channel.
But, but the city will sell mosquito repellent?
It will sell, we're going to go door-to-door selling this.
Well, no, I mean, that, I mean, that, that's a, that's a tough one, I know that people talk about it, and we heard a lot about it during city council meetings and on Facebook, of course. But they have these wonderful, wonderful devices you can buy for your backyard that co- for your backyard that sometimes covers up to a quarter of an acre that residents can buy to take care of their mosquitoes, which I've done on my property in the past.
Uh, count, uh, legal fees on city council meetings, seventy-two hundred?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm wondering if we could even perhaps increase that a little bit, and just, uh, have them on call. If we need them here, if we got a bond issue, or we got something that we think might, we need legal advice on, we'll call them. And if we have an issue that, uh, raises a legal question during a meeting, we'll just have to table that to the next meeting, and then-
I, I agree with that. I, I think we could eliminate that and do it on-call.
Okay. So, the rest of these that we have here, um, we'll be starting a process, uh, to talk to, uh, individual department heads and, and the people who, uh, may be eligible for retirement, and see what we can work out. And I'd like to do that within the next two weeks, if we can do that. Um, are there any questions and comments or anything here so far?
I just want to verify the max, uh, property tax max levy you guys are a maybe on, or a yes on?
I'm a maybe on that one.
You're a maybe on that one?
I am. Well, I'm a yes on it.
Yes. It's what we are allowed under the PTEL.
Yeah.
I think, um, we've refrained from doing it, and probably to our detriment, so I, I would support it.
Um, I guess, uh, well, I won't get into this now, this will be a different meeting. Uh, item five B is discussion regarding sales tax referendum, and the question is, are, does the council wish to propose a, uh, question to the voters again on, uh, raising the, giving us the ability to raise the sales tax, and, uh, is that how we want, we, do we want to proceed with that?
You know, I, I don't mind asking the voters a question like this. Um, I'm, I'm not sure how I would vote on a question like this, but I think to put it to the voters is the right thing to do. Um, and it, and if we're not putting this on, um, as a referendum, it's not gonna affect what we're talking about here, because that's too far in the future, and, um, it could likely get voted down.
Right.
As far as putting it on the ballot, I don't have a problem with putting it on the ballot.
Because we won't even see any funds from this, even if it does get approved for what?
Estimate, at least six months.
Probably October. Yeah, six months.
So, it, it's not gonna be enough to, we're still gonna have to make these cuts, no matter what. You know, it, we might be able to, to mitigate later if it does pass, but I think it doesn't hurt to ask.
And I, I'm, I'm, I guess I get a little perturbed when I, uh, I want to be sure that this is clear, that I get perturbed, and I don't, I, I call this the silly season. Uh, six months before an election, people come out of the woodwork with, uh, twisting things and saying things that people that are running for office or are in office are doing. And, uh, I see things on Facebook about how the city, uh, voted to raise taxes when we were voting for home rule. No, we didn't vote to raise taxes. We voted to ask the citizens if they would be willing to, uh, raise taxes on the, a, uh, uh, sales tax at that time. And that's what we would be doing here. We are not voting to increase the sales tax. We are voting, if we so approve, and we vote that way, to ask the citizens if they are willing to, to fund the city's services, uh, with an increase in the sales tax. And, uh, so, if you, I guess if you hear somebody saying that the city's increased the sales tax, no, we're not doing it yet. We're asking the citizens of our community if they wanted, if they want us to do that. And there's a big difference. Um, so, is there a, I guess I'm looking for a motion on this. Is there a motion to, uh, proceed with putting this on the ballot for April? So, the motion and second. Is there further discussion?
I, I just think, again, if, if we're gonna put this out for the citizens to vote, I think it's really critical that we attach the correct information with it, and what it will do in terms of helping to improve the services, helping to improve the citizens, uh, the city itself. In addition, I think it's really important for them to understand that this, we're kinda behind in the surrounding communities when it comes to sales tax, and what this would do not only for services, uh, for our city, but helping with, with the budget itself, is, which is why we're here to discuss these cuts that we have to make, because home rule failed.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Uh, item number six is adjourned. Um, I guess I want to be sure that everybody understands that, uh, if you have any questions about what we're trying to do here, uh, and you, you can feel free to stop in here, ask me if you want to talk to me. If you want to talk to any other commissioners, um, we will be happy to answer your questions. And, um, just feel free to ask. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I will.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Re-adjourned. Thank you.